Okay, very good. I think you need to boost your volume a little bit because you're coming in kind of soft. All right? Call the meeting for order. Regular city council meeting for November fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Pierre Washington.
Here.
Councilmember David Oro.
Here.
Councilmember Mark Joseph.
Here.
Vice Mayor Miriam Abudalmas.
Here.
Mayor Leon Garcia.
Here. Thank you, counsel. We'll move on now to report on closed session, confirmation of reportable action. Mr. Ross?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, members of the public, your council convened in four, at four oh five P. M. to, in open, to address the matters agendized for closed session, consideration which, after ascertaining the existence of public comment, you did so at four oh five, first considering agenda item number three. You concluded your consideration of agenda item number three at approximately five thirty, and then reconvened at five thirty-four to address agenda items one and two, which concluded at six oh four P. M., then reconvened with, in closed session again, with respect to agenda item three. With respect to reportable action, I will accomplish a written report consistent with government code section fifty-four, nine, fifty-seven point one concerning those issues. That would conclude the report unless there are questions.
Any questions for counsel? Seeing none, hearing none. Thank you, Mr. Ross. We'll proceed with our agenda. Any agenda changes?
I would, right after we have our public comment, I would request that we take business item thirteen, update on secondhand smoke, and bring it forward to be considered after our consent calendar.
Thank you. I'd like to take public comment. Counsel in agreement with moving that agenda item?
Yes.
Yes.
Could I get a second, please?
Second.
Second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Washington.
Yes.
Councilmember Oro.
Yes.
Councilmember Joseph.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Abudalmas.
Yes.
Mayor Garcia.
Yes, thank you, counsel. So noted. Any public comment on items not on the agenda? We'll take public comment at this time.
I have Barry Christian.
Good evening. Good evening, Barry Christian, American Canyon. I have four things, kind of all thank yous. First, I want to thank councilmember Mark Joseph and Mayor Leon Garcia for attending the open space, are we a commission yet, open space committee meeting? First of all, both of you have been long-term advocates for parks and trails and open space, and I just want to thank you for that. I really appreciate it. And having you at the meeting was helpful for me. I know I can't speak for the committee, but to have some oversight and interest from the council, who will be, we will be advising, that was, that was just very helpful for me to have you hear your perspective and, and have you in the room helping us figure out our, our relationship and our path, path forward. So, thank you. Second, a shout out to the city and park director Ali Ikada for the trail project that was done, not this weekend, the last weekend, Ridge Trail Service Day. I thought it was a great project. I wasn't participating in it, but I went up there on my mountain bike right afterwards. It looked like great work. It's a, it's a five hundred-foot section of gravel on the road. I think they did a great job. They had ten or fifteen volunteers, a lot of support from the city, from Public Works Director Eric Almond-Smoothes and Utilities and Maintenance Director Felix Hernandez, and I thought it was a great project. I, I realize it's expensive to do those projects. I'm not expecting the city to do those, but I think it sets a tone. Even if you only do it once or twice a year, it's progress. It's moving in that direction, and maybe it leads to other techniques where we have regular volunteer trail crew out there supervised by the city. So I think our, our open space commission will be looking at that. And with the goal of a year-round trail, so a surface where you can go out there year-round, even in the winter when it rains and it gets mucky, that, that we can help alleviate that. The third, a shout out to the city for the Green Island Road extension. I understand that came out of staff, Jason Holly and, and his design team. That's the section that goes from Devlin Road west to Commerce Boulevard, and that's important because that's a bay trail. It's not the Vine Trail, but that connection right now, except for two tenths of a mile on Commerce Boulevard where there's no sidewalk, the whole rest of the thing from, from Green Island Road all the way to Mini Drive, all the way through the city is already either sidewalk or class one. So that means you have a safe route through the whole city on the west side if you use that route, and that's terrific for connectivity and, and that. And so that was a great idea, I think, to extend that west, so I'm, I'm thankful for that. Finally, the Vine Trail, the city's support for the Vine Trail, and the city built the Silver Oak to Newell connection a number of years ago, didn't ask for the Vine Trail, didn't go to them, but the city took responsibility for that, and I think that's great leadership on the city's part for that and for trails generally. So, thank you.
Thank you. Another speaker?
Yes. Beth Marcus.
Good evening, Beth Marcus, longtime resident. First of all, I want to thank or congratulate Mark and David on being re-elected. Good job. And I want to send out a thanks to Cindy for her Veterans Day ceremony that she did. It was a wonderful, wonderful event. And then the last thing, I don't know when it was, Fran and I was driving around one night. I don't know where we were going, what we were doing, but we noticed that some of the, it may have been the choir, especially here in the corner, and it might, I'm talking about the streetlights. A lot of the streetlights, you can't see the streets. You can't see the lines in the streets. And especially over here where the new Circle K is going to be, but I'm sure once it's, once it comes up or it opens, then there'll probably be a lot of lights. But there are a lot of lights within the city that you just, a lot of street that you can't see. They're very, very dark, and I don't remember. Oh, oh, yeah, Donaldson, and I know Fran's mentioned this before, over on Vintage Ranch, I think. And by Shenandoah, where there's a walkway and it comes up by the stop sign. It's very dark there. So anyhow, I just want that to call, call that to your attention, and, and I'm just going to put another plug for a reader board.
Thank you. Is there another speaker?
Yes, I have Justin Hamilton-Hole. Go ahead, Justin.
Justin, if you could turn your volume up a little bit, it's kind of hard to hear you. Yeah, you need more volume.
Mr. Mayor, I think council, Vice Mayor Abudalmas has the same problem, and I think it might be a technical issue.
Yeah. Is that us?
Like we're only hearing it from one speaker over there or something.
We can, we can hear you, Justin. Just hang by.
Go ahead, go ahead, Justin.
Give it another try here.
Now, does anybody hear me?
That's a little better.
I want to thank you so much. I want to thank Pierre Washington. It's very nice to see him on the, on the, on the eleven, in person on South Park. It's very nice to see him. Thank you for talking to me. And I want to shout out our, we had somebody in the room that he, she is working with, Gabby, on the Vine. Good to see you.
Is that everything? Did we lose it?
Justin, are you, are you still there? Did you, hold on a moment, please. Could you, could you say something, Justin?
Yeah, I hear me?
Oh, that's still, uh.
I can hear Justin just fine.
Yeah, it's in the room.
It's, uh, probably in the council chambers.
Try again, please.
Justin, Justin, what's your screen?
It's the same thing.
How are we doing?
Okay, everyone, please stay connected to Zoom. We're switching out a laptop.
Well, hopefully we're making some progress here.
Okay, Justin, are you there? Okay, Justin, are you there?
Yes, I, I am here.
Uh, much better.
Great, we can hear you.
Okay.
Please start again.
We'll start again, yes. Go ahead, Justin.
Well, I'm so happy, I'm very happy that I see our Pierre Washington in, in person outside. It's very nice to see him. And I wanted to shout out, we had somebody in the room that she working the Vine, many working the Vine, so I'm gonna say, I, I'm gonna say all that to her. Thank you.
Thank you, Justin.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
I have no more speakers.
All right, very good. Thank you. Then we have a, a agenda change here. Let me take up item. We need a consent for. Okay, is there a motion to accept a consent calendar?
So moved.
I'll second.
Motion second, roll call, please.
Councilmember Washington.
Yes.
Councilmember Oro.
Yes.
Councilmember Joseph.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Abudalmas.
Yes.
Mayor Garcia.
Yes, thank you, counsel. Moving on now to our item we moved up. This is a business item. That's the number thirteen, update on secondhand smoke and multifamily settings.
Yes, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor and counsel. This item is an update on a presentation that the council received last December related to the dangers of secondhand smoking in multifamily settings. The council at that, after that presentation expressed an interest in learning more about this issue, and in attachments to, to the staff report, starting on page two oh four, is some materials that have been provided to us by the Napa County Health and Human Services and the Napa Youth Council, who had originally brought this issue to you all. And since that time, what staff has done is to go and investigate the situation as it relates to smoking and secondhand smoke in multifamily settings in American Canyon specifically. And there's a matrix that shows up on page two oh three of the packet. What we did was to go and talk to the owners of the apartment complexes in town, and that's what shows up here in the, on page two oh three. We went and talked with Canyon Ridge, The Lodge, Village of Vintage Ranch, and all the locations that are listed here. We also talked with all the mobile home parks as well, and our questions to them were focused on their rental units. Do they allow smoking indoors in the rental units? In the case of the mobile homes, the, some of those units are rented and some of them are homeowner-owned and occupied, and so we, we asked about those conditions as well. I think there's a bit of good news here, at least for us, because we're, we're able to deduce is that all of the rental units do, the owners do not allow smoking in the rental units. Some of the mobile home parks, like I mentioned, have individually-owned trailers, and, and it's up to the individual owners there, but the, even the mobile home parks actually rent out some of their units. Some of those units are owned by the park owners, and even in those rental mobile home units, the owners don't let them smoke in those. So basically, the, the multifamily properties, the apartment complexes and such already have prohibitions. Those prohibitions aren't out of health concerns generally. They're more related to economic investment and protection of their investment, and it's really not that surprising, particularly because most of our apartment complexes are relatively new, at least in this century, and, and a good deal of money was spent building those, and, and the owners don't want them damaged with, with smoking. We did even check with the apartment complex that's located at the, at the southwest corner of American Canyon Road, Flosden and Newell, that being an older apartment complex, and we thought, well, maybe they might still allow smoking, but even they do not allow smoking in their units either. So basically, that's kind of an update of where we are. The council was interested in learning more about this, about this issue, and we have received sample ordinances and some other information, and if, if that was the direction that the council wanted to go, we would pursue, you know, something like that. But we wanted to bring this information forward to, to show that, at least in American Canyon, we don't think there's a very, a real big prevalence of smoking in multifamily settings. We did receive a list of other multifamily units. These would be either duplexes or triplexes. There's a list that the state HCD has a database on their end. The database has some information in it, but a lot of the, the locations they've identified aren't occupied at all, or they're not, not units that are attached to each other. It's, for example, on, on Broadway, there's a triplex just south of Holcomb on the northbound side of the road. It's, they're all boarded up, but those are three detached cottages. They just happen to all be in the same property, and the state thinks that's a triplex, but they're not even attached. So we haven't gone through that entire list, but it's a, it's a smattering of duplexes and triplexes identified that we, we didn't check with, but just through a windshield inspection, could see that many of them were boarded up and probably not fitting the same definition of, of the same dangers of secondhand smoke. So really up to the, the council at this point as to how farther, how much farther we might want to take this. One of the main concerns that staff has, and we want to have a discussion with the council about, would be code enforcement. In, in the case of most of our code enforcement actions, they start with a complaint and really can only be investigated based on what can be from plain view from the public right of way. So, you know, from the sidewalk or from the street, if we see a code enforcement, we see piles of trash or what have you from the street, we're able to initiate code enforcement. In, in the case of smoking, it appears to be a lot more complicated than that. So part of what we would need to do is really set out some expectations around code enforcement, if that's the direction the, the council chooses to go. But it would be appropriate to entertain public comment. I think we have some speakers on Zoom and perhaps some speakers here in the audience as well that would like to address the council.
Counsel ready for public comment? Public comment on this matter is open? Anybody wishing to comment? Do you have anybody online?
I have Justin. Go ahead, Justin.
Thank you. I was going to just say that I always keep look out my, my tree. I'm just like, I give samples, there's like a couple of harvests, and I look around to see, I can, I always just keep the, my tree.
Thank you, Justin.
Anybody else in the queue?
I have no other hands raised.
Okay. Well, this is informational items, so appreciate the update. I think it's encouraging to see. Somebody else wanting to comment? Very good. No? Yes? Oh, good, all right. All right. Very good. Public comment is on this. You can come to the podium. Please introduce yourself.
Hi, my name's Ariselli Cantara.
Oh, you can move the microphone. Yeah, there, there you go.
Okay. Is that okay?
That's better.
Okay. Hi, my name's Ariselli Cantara, and I'm a twelfth grader at New Technology High School. I'm also a part of the Napa Youth Council. I would just cite to say some words on a part of the multi-unit housing ban and epidemic that's come up with, in, in relations to smoking. Voluntary smoke, voluntary smoke-free multi-unit housing policies are great, but they do not offer the same protection to all residents of multi-unit housing, and they do not guarantee smoke-free housing in the future. A uniform local policy would promote healthy equity and support property owners and enforcement. Multi-unit housing is good for property owners, making prop, or smoke-free multi-unit housing is good for property owners. Making properties smoke-free can reduce cost, risk, and liability, and it's attractive to residents and families. If you're not familiar with multi-unit housing, multi, uh, smoking, if you're not familiar with the consequences of smoking in multi-unit housing, I would like to refer to, I would like to explain to you a little bit about what secondhand smoke and smoking can cause. Secondhand smoke can drift through buildings and enter common areas and units occupied by non-smokers through vents, doors, windows, hallways, electrical outlets, and through gaps around fixtures and walls. Even if smoking is not allowed indoors, the existence of smoking areas near buildings can still expose residents to secondhand smoke. A policy should include provisions for the placement of smoking areas. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for a public comment?
I have no other hands raised.
We'll close. Public comment returned to council on this. I am impressed with the report, and being a healthcare provider in my professional world, I certainly know the consequences, and I've treated patients who have suffered the consequences of tobacco use and smoking. So I'm, I would encourage us to move forward with a policy supporting this. Also like comment, pleased to see the results of Prop thirty-one, vapor smoking as well. Maybe something to be considered as well, as more information is known about it. Any other comment from council? Oh, Vice Mayor Abudalmas.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I agree with you. I think that it should be codified. Another thing to keep in common is while people may be starting to steer away from smoking the traditional cigarette, vaping has become more and more popular, and it's harder to detect. I'm sorry, I'm trying to talk over this one. It's, it's harder to detect, and if we don't have something codified in place, if somebody were to be vaping in a multi-unit housing complex, then we have no mechanisms to enforce it and get rid of that vaping. And ultimately, like Ariselli said, it could cause, you know, everlasting side effects to people who, you know, unintended side effects to people who have nothing to do with smoking, children in particular. So I'm more of the opinion that we should codify it, even though I'm so pleased to hear that the bulk of our multi-unit, all of our multi-unit housing complexes in the city of American Canyon have voluntarily done so. Like Ariselli mentioned, it's not a guarantee for the future. What if we go back into a trend where, you know, smoking cigarettes is cool and you start seeing it in the movies, and, I mean, hopefully that never happens, but you never know. We legalized smoking marijuana in two thousand and sixteen. That also has the adverse effects that are unintended to secondhand smoke, people who are exposed to secondhand smoke. So those are my comments for now, Mr. Mayor. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments. Is this your line?
Yeah.
Okay. Councilmember, Councilmember Joseph?
Yes, I, I, I appreciate staff's report because it does indicate that we don't have any multifamily or, or what, what I would consider multifamily projects that allow for smoking, and, and I think a lot of that is for economics. It, it costs more to clean up an apartment after you've been smoking in it. So I'm inclined to think that we have a, a pretty effective self-regulating mechanism. If the council wants to go ahead and codify it, I think we should also be looking at some of the managers' concerns relative to code enforcement, and there, I think, would be more for the, the various duplexes and triplexes that are a lot harder to figure out. For example, it's easy to see the, the apartments and know that out. For example, it's easy to see the apartments and know that we want to enforce there. But it's hard to tell which which house has an accessory dwelling unit that might constitute a multifamily. You know, how do we enforce that or not? So, you know, if the council wants to move forward with an ordinance like this, I would really encourage staff to work with council or work with the group to craft it in a manner that allows it to be reasonably enforced. And that's my biggest concern, that that we would be asked to enforce, you know, a house because there's a unit in the back, and that's a multifamily, and they shouldn't be allowed to smoke, even though the landlord doesn't object or whatever. I guess that's my biggest concern, how the enforcement mechanisms, as well as the fact that it looks like we've already solved the problem. But that's just my view.
Thank you. Councilmember Oro.
Yeah, I don't think we need to take any action, considering that it's already being self-regulated within the marketplace here. You know, I mean, if it comes up, then we can revisit this whole thing again. But I think the property owners and the people here at American Canyon have already taken care of that. And I don't see why we should take action. We can always take action in the future. We don't need to be creating ordinances that where problems are already addressed.
Okay. Any other comment? Thank you for the presentation.
Vice Mayor Abudalmas has her hand raised.
Oh, Vice Mayor Abudalmas.
Sorry. One thing I forgot to mention, Councilmember Mark Joseph mentioned that it's mostly for the economics. It's cheaper to clean a non-smoking unit than it is to clean a smoking unit. We're fortunate, I mean, we are currently in an out of the ordinary housing market. And so if we are ever in a situation where, you know, we are no longer short of housing, then people are going to be forced to open up more housing units. And if that includes smoking and the economy, the economics are eventually going to pens. Do you know what I mean? So it wouldn't matter that it costs more to clean out the unit if some if a smoker comes in, because at the end of the day, I think that unit is rented, and it opens up to more candidates for that unit. I don't even know if that came out clearly, but it's so weird to be on Zoom, because all I can see is myself on two screens when I'm talking. So it looks like I'm talking to myself twice.
Thank you for your comment, Vice Mayor. Now, my comments are more related to public health issues. We ready to move on to the next item? Very good. Would you want to comment? Council agreeable to open a public comment again? Very good. Public comment is open. Please come to the podium and identify yourself, please.
Also, ma'am, if you could fill out a speaker card for me after your comment and just bring it around. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Isadora Ash, and I co-facilitate the Napa County Youth Council. I just wanted to ask a question. How many apartment complexes are there in American Canyon? Someone suggested to me there's 28. Is that correct?
Ma'am, you can pick that up in the staff report on the city webpage. Look up the council agenda.
Okay. So I was just wondering if all of those had been contacted?
Apparently so.
Yeah, I can address the question. Mayor, we have we have eight, what we would consider complexes, meaning, you know, more than two or three units. And we contacted all eight of those. We do have a list. I think the list the speaker is referring to is the list I mentioned from HCD, which includes duplexes and triplexes and three cottages on a property, that sort of thing. So we did not contact all of those. We did kind of a windshield survey of those to 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 check the address to see what was on those properties. For example, there's some duets over on Donaldson, southwest corner of Donaldson. They share a garage wall, technically considered a duplex on a singular property. Some of them are boarded up at the moment, but not sharing a common wall of occupancy. So I think to Councilmember Joseph's point, defining multifamily in the context of a potential ordinance would become critical, because an ADU has multifamily connotations. A duet with a shared garage wall has multifamily connotations. Three single freestanding cottages on a property from HCD's mind is considered a triplex, no shared walls. So you probably wouldn't be able to use the the multifamily designations in land use or the multifamily designations that the state has. You would probably be needing to craft something that is specific to this particular issue to, again, probably speaking to the bigger complexes. And we've, like I said, there are eight of them that we're aware of, and we've talked to them all. And they already prohibit smoking.
And I just wanted to say that working with the youth councils, our students, a lot of our students couldn't be here tonight for various reasons. But they're very, very, very passionate about this issue. And they're noticing a lot of their peers are not joining the ranks of smokers. And so there's a lot of motivation among the students. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, you work on that effort. And thank you to the youth council for your effort and your presentation this evening. Thank you. Moving on with our business. Council ready? Now, we're on the public hearings, water conservation, plan municipal code update first reading.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, but does that mean, how are we moving forward with the smoking ordinance? Are we going to do one? Are we not? I kind of heard a two and two.
I didn't hear any support for it.
I'm sorry?
I did not hear any support for it.
Oh, I thought you and I supported it. And then Mark said maybe.
You want to make a motion of that effect?
Sure, I'll make a motion that we go ahead and do an ordinance to codify non-smoking in multi-unit family housing.
Your second? I'll second the motion. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Washington?
Yes.
Councilmember Oro?
No.
Councilmember Joseph?
I'm going to say no.
Vice Mayor Abudalmas?
Yes.
And Mayor Garcia?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Appreciate it. Thank you, Councilmember. So we're on water update.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Bit of Groundhog Day on this one, huh? Felix Hernandez, Maintenance Utilities Director, Water Conservation Municipal Code Update First Reading. So in 2018, new legislation created the Water Shortage Contingency Plan mandate. This plan replaced the water shortage contingency analysis under former law. What this new mandate did was it provided consistency throughout California. The city's Water Shortage Contingency Plan details the different stages of action that can be taken during to reduce demand during drought conditions or when the council so chooses. The goal of the Water Shortage Contingency Plan is to have the procedure to manage and mitigate shortages, which will allow the city to respond to these events. The water shortage response includes, if we have a demand of reduction, supply augmentation, operational changes, and mandatory prohibitions to address shortage levels. The different stages, which have gone, the change is from four stages to two to six, pardon me, and are summarized in Table 8.1 of the 2020 Urban Water Management Plan. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from council before I open up the public hearing? No? Public hearing is open on this matter. If anyone from the public wish to comment, please come to the podium. Seeing no one, I'll close public comment. Return to council for further discussion, desired If there's no further discussion, there is a matter of an ordinance.
I can't seem to pull up the ordinance, so I'm just going to make a motion based on the agenda, and that is to warn health and safety violations at 106 Wilson Way. Staff report briefly summarizes the factual issues associated with the property. After it burned on April 9 of 2021, fire officials noticed that part of the difficulty in suppressing the fire was due to the accumulation of debris on the property. The property at that time had received multiple complaints. It subsequently received multiple notices of violation for numerous health and safety and nuisance violations. Since February of 2022, after a cleanup was accomplished in the fall of 2021 by the property insurance of the owner, the condition of the property continued to deteriorate, requiring a sequence of applications to the Superior Court for rights of entry and notices of abatement. Each of those were necessary to quantify the amount of debris on the property and to effectuate its abatement through Central Valley Environmental, the consultant on the matter. The procedures in the county or in the city municipal code allow for the recovery of those costs under Chapter 9.4 and 1036, after the preparation of a memorandum of costs by the city manager. Here, the city manager delegated that job to the city attorney. That's contained in Item 12.2 of the report before you. Please notice that there's the areas of costs include both the consultant cleanup, vehicle abatement, security. The basis for security was so that the property could not be, if you will, re-inhabited or re-infested with more debris and health violations during the night. The legal fees are also set forth, as well as staff time. That's all summarized in a resolution, which would be the method for formalizing that and presenting it to the county clerk as a lien against the property for those costs. The costs that are before you are through September 30 of this year. There have been subsequent costs since that time. The owner of the property, Lee Schmidt, is present. He received notice personally on November 4, 2022, in compliance with the procedures of the municipal code. It would be the staff recommendation and the recommendation of the city attorney that the public hearing be open, that you hear from the property owner on the matter, who has been advised several times to retain legal counsel to assist in the several measures that are applicable to the property, not only the cleanup, but, you know, potential continued habitation of the property, and assistance with his personal affairs. That would conclude the staff report. The memorandum of costs total $181,016.50. Mr. Schmidt is present and wishes to testify on the matter. Any questions? They can respond.
Any questions from council before I open the public hearing? Public hearing is now open on this matter. If you have a want to speak to it, Mr. Schmidt, please come to the podium. Please come to the podium and identify yourself, please, sir, for the record. Please identify yourself at the podium for the record, sir.
I'm not used to this.
I just adjusted the mic down to so you're speaking to it. You can pull the mic down. There you go. That's better.
Let's see. Well, I plead guilty.
Your name, sir?
Pardon?
Your name for the record?
Oh, Lee Schmidt.
Lee Schmidt. Very good.
Early on, Social Security.
Right. Go ahead.
Plead guilty to some of it. There are other circumstances. The abatement people in clear visible did not remove all everything. It's still on the property, very visible from the street, for sure. But like I say, I do plea, you know, I do a lot of, I guess, recycling. That brings up, incidentally, the city could do better job recycling. I've been here many, many years ago, it was, and you were mayor, and mentioned, there isn't even any, you know, on the trails out in the Edgewater Drive where the hiking is. I mentioned that. Why don't they have recycling bins there?
Oh, Ms. Schmidt, we're speaking about your property.
Pardon? Yeah, I know. But that I just, yeah.
Let's keep our conversation related to that, please.
Mr. Schmidt, there's a time limit of three minutes that's associated.
What?
There's a three-minute time limit, but so if you could summarize your position.
Oh, man. I can ramble. Anyway, I, there's going to be a lien. Well, there already is, I'm sure. I'll get that paid. Not tonight. I've got other properties, and I can always use the cash. But I would like to, I lost so much stuff. And this was the original farmhouse in American Canyon. And I had been staying in the barn, everything out of, you know, all built, just wood, no, no sheet rock, none of that stuff, built in 1921, I think, probably. And I had been staying in the barn. We had all kinds of tools, multitude of stuff in saved in the barn. Well, they went, you know, we had a mattress bed, a couch, and to just, I can make a whole list. My clothes. I ended up with no clothes. And I want to come to some sort compensation for that stuff. There was no reason for them to destroy everything in that, you know, in that living quarters. I stayed there, you know, I, well, I did, I wasn't always staying there. I lost, I rescue dogs. I probably spent, it just cost me just recently probably $30,000, $40,000 to give a dog. Got an extra six months of life was all. But in fact, oh, and the vehicles, yes. They wanted all the vehicles removed. We drove four of them off of, I think it was a list of eight. We drove four of them off the property.
Sorry, will somebody please mute that phone? Oh, sorry. All right.
It's in the pocket there.
I guess that's.
Thank you.
Right.
Sorry about that. Yeah. Forgot where I was now.
Mr. Schmidt, we've talked about you getting a lawyer several times to help you on this.
I've got one in waiting, yes.
Okay.
But I wanted to tend here first.
Very good. Thank you.
Before, yeah.
I think your time's up, sir, so.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
Anyway, I would like compensation for a lot of, some sort of agreement as far as the amount.
Thanks, sir.
It'd be my recommendation that you continue the matter to December 6 to allow Mr. Schmidt time to get a lawyer on this matter to assist him with its many aspects. I think that would be beneficial to achieve and work for a final resolution on the issue on the property.
Your recommendation is continue it to December 6.
Six.
Six.
Next council meeting.
Next council, okay.
Do we have any other public comments, though? I mean, granted, Mr. Schmidt is probably the primary person, but does anyone else want to talk?
It is a public hearing, yes. Please come forward. Three minutes, three minutes.
Good evening, Mayor and counsel. I, I, I was struck by something, uh.
Could you please identify yourself?
Oh, Kenneth Leary, uh, City of American Canyon.
Yeah, just for the record.
All right, yeah. That, you mentioned that this was one of the original farmhouses in American Canyon. Is that correct? You mentioned about original farmhouse in American Canyon.
His name was James Andrew McKnight.
Okay, and that house is the orig, is one of, it's, it's, it's original?
Probably the oldest, but there could be something older, over there.
McKnight.
Yeah. Yeah, I, it, just, uh, thinking about, okay, that we don't have any, any pieces of property like that that go back that are preserved and maybe down the line, that is something that could be done with that property. If it's, if it is one of the original, uh, homesteads in American Canyon, it really would be nice to be able to, uh, make that a monument or do something because, uh, we don't, we're not preserving any of the old buildings around here, you know, probably it's not what it used to look like and those kinds of things, but that's the history of American Canyon, and I'd like to see more of it, uh, uh, that people can, you know, see what it used to be and what it is. And, uh, so that's just my comment, because I, that, that, I, I'd never even thought of that or, so, yeah, so thank you very much, uh.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Can I interrupt yet?
I got a, I got a minute and twenty-seven seconds left.
Well, I want to keep it as a farm.
Right.
We'll, we'll, we'll talk, we'll talk back.
There's opportunity for that, Mr., uh, sorry, uh.
I want to make it a place for tourists.
All right, I understand, I understand that.
They could use someone like that.
Opportunities, uh, another time for that, sir. Right, any other speakers on this, at this time? If not, in closing public hearing, we will turn to counsel for consideration.
If there's no further discussion, I'll make a motion to continue this item on December sixth.
I'll second. Motion second, roll call, please.
Councilmember Washington.
Yes.
Councilmember Oro.
Yes.
Councilmember Joseph.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Abadamas.
Yes.
Mayor Garcia.
Yes, thank you, counsel. Okay, we'll move on with our business items. We'll take here now item number fourteen, contract award for the Green Island Road Rule twenty A B Utility Undergrounding Project, TR sixteen dash zero seven zero three.
Good evening, Mayor, council members.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, council members in the community. I'm Erica Almond Smithy, is Public Works Director. Um, here to announce our, the award of the, the construction contract, um, for the Green Island Road, um, undergrounding phase portion of the project to Saint Francis Electric. In addition to that, we have the, an overhead utility service con, um, conversions to a couple of homes, um, on Green Island Road for a twenty-nine thousand mark with RC Electric. In addition, we have a request to authorize city manager into an agreement with Conso or North America, who was formerly Questa, not Questa Engineering, Quincy Engineering, to complete the construction management services. In addition, authorizing, authorizing the city manage, our Public Works Director to approve contract change orders, um, in an aggregate amount not to exceed the project budget. What was really exciting about this project, um, bidding process is that the bids came in, um, the, the lowest bidder came in a hundred thousand under the engineer's estimate of one point eight million. In addition, it's the first construction contract that includes a project labor agreement with the Napa Saleno Building, um, Builders and Construction Trades Council. We do have Danny Bernardini, the, the business manager here, who may want to say a few words about that. There will be one additional item, um, that probably we may be bringing back to council in December, which is for consent, which is the, the material testing on this project. We think it might be above the threshold for the city manager to sign, so, um, if that comes up, that'll likely be a consent item later. We just didn't have enough time to get that included in this, tonight's staff report, so with that, I'll leave it to you for any questions or?
Thank you. Questions, uh, for counsel before we open for a public comment? Councilmember Joseph.
A quick question. Uh, we talked about change orders not to exceed the project budget, but I'm not sure what the budget is, because in the staff report, it talks about this phase one, but also funding for, uh, the bond issue as well as the final design. So how much change orders are we, you know, dollar amounts are we talking about?
The total construction budget here says two point five million seventy thousand, two point five hundred and seventy thousand dollars.
But?
Leaving the, leaving the remaining project budget of seven hundred thousand, so I guess we could re-modify the staff report, a resolution to read, not to exceed the total construction budget of two point five.
Okay, because the only reason, what I'm asking is, there's also a cost associated with doing the bond so that we can bring in some of that fourteen million as well as to finalize any design issues. So I want to make sure there's money for that versus, you know, we have this.
Maxing it out.
Yeah.
I got you.
I don't want to see a change order coming back saying, well, we used all that money and now we have to finish the rest of the project. So I'm just trying to get clarification on how much, how much money do you have for change orders for this particular component?
So if we could modify the resolution to say, authorizing the Public Works Director to approve contract change orders in an aggregate amount not to exceed the project budget of two point, two million five hundred and seventy thousand dollars, I think that's an easy fix in the resolution.
Yeah? Okay. Does that leave us the money for the bonding and the final design?
Correct, that should leave seven hundred thousand dollars remaining in the project budget.
Okay.
Um, I forgot to add that we'll, we'll work, I'll work with the, um, our Public Works will work with, um, the Chamber on a groundbreaking event, since it's historic and getting the Green Island Road project going.
The Chamber will be happy to see this happening, I can assure you.
Likely in the new year.
Any other public, uh, or counsel questions, comment? No? Just like to add the, uh, looking forward to this happening. I was there with the, uh, license cameras, uh, the presentation that, uh, was pretty clear how loud the trucks are going across that road with the surface the way it is, so I understand this is not the road surface, this is getting the infrastructure in place, but good to see it moving forward. Thank you. Well, open a public comment on this matter right now, so come forward.
Mayor Garcia, I have Danny Bernardarn, you could say that, please.
I got your back. Good evening, everyone. My name is Danny Bernardini with Napa Saleno Building Trades. Uh, thank you, Mayor, counsel here and at home, staff and everyone, uh, watching and in person. Tonight is a very happy night for working people. The council should be really proud of itself for being the first project labor agreement in Napa County, um, that we've ever had. I represent nineteen union construction affiliates. My, my working men and women travel far and wide to find work, and it's exciting to know that a project locally here in Napa is going to have, um, both union and non-union, but everyone on the job is going to be taken care of, they're going to be looked after, and they're going to make sure they're going to be getting their benefits and wages. And so, um, this has been a culmination. I think I was here probably like the month before COVID, and there's been some things internally we had to get straightened out, and then, um, we started meeting with Jason and, and Bill and, and Erica and, and the whole team, and, look, I'm going to tell you, I've, I've done this, uh, with a lot of cities, and staff here was nothing more than professional. They were amazing to work with, um, they, staff can be a problem in others, other areas that we've been, they can, they can put in roadblocks, and this, this staff understood the council was, was with this and, and carried it out very professionally. Work, we had to work very quickly on some timelines that were moving, and, um, I just want to thank them for, for that as well. And so, again, um, we're looking forward to this being the first of many projects. We're looking at, uh, talking about the capital improvement plan going forward, and, um, you know, it's music to my ears to hear that the bids came in underneath, because, you know, our opponents have probably been here saying the opposite, and so, um, you know, we look forward to, to making this tradition and keep it rolling, and, you know, I think this week, uh, Napa County in the whole kind of sent another message that working people matter in this county. You're seeing it in, not only in the cities, but at the county level. You know, for many years, there's been a lot of workers that have been taken advantage of in this, in this area, in various industries, and to know that the construction workers in American Canyon on these projects and others are going to be taken care of is, is amazing, you should be really proud of yourself. So, again, I want to thank everyone for having the foresight and the, uh, the guts, I should say, to, to take this first step, because, um, a lot of people have taken that first step, and so you're going to always be the first, and so thank you again. And if there's any questions, I'll stick around. If not, let you guys get on to the business.
Okay. Comments, question? Uh, Councilmember Washington.
Yeah, Danny, I just want, Danny B., I just want to say that, uh, according to you, this is a pretty high profile in Napa County, correct? And this is a time for celebration, correct?
Hundred percent, yeah.
Okay, I'd like to see you smile like that.
Yeah. It's been a while since I've actually got the smile in front of people. There's no screen in front of me, so no, it's, it's, it's a great day. We've worked hard, and, and I'd be remiss if I didn't think the, the whole Napa Working Families Coalition has come together to try to change the views and, and the attitudes in this county for working people.
Thank you. Thank you, Jason. Well, thank you for your, uh, your work on this, and staff as well.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, um, Danny, I just wanted to say thank you for all of your hard work on this. It's been a long time coming, and I, I know you've had some disappointments, some ups and downs along the road, but, um, you do great work, and this is just a testament to that, so thank you so much for being here tonight, and thank you for doing what you do.
Very good.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I.
If I'll just go through?
I had some questions, but I, I also would like to make some comments. First of all, I'm excited that we're moving forward on this project. I'm particularly excited over the fact that we were able to pull off a project labor agreement and that it, in fact, came under the estimate. That, that was really the exciting part, because it's easy to put one in, and, and then I, I admit I had little faith. I thought it was going to be really expensive, so everything is, is great from that perspective. But I do have a few comments on the project itself. First, as I've mentioned to the city manager, I'd like to make sure that we look at the final design when we're talking about paving and everything, make sure we include at least a class four bike lane on Commerce as well as Hannah, if that's possible. Uh, I know Barry Christian was chatting about the quarter mile or whatever, but, uh, having talked to the bike coalition in the past, I, I think there's enough space there, so if we could plug that into the design, I would really appreciate it. I think that would make it a better project, not just for the trucks, but for the, the workers that may be cycling. Beyond that, I'd, I'd like to get a report. I have a number of concerns, primarily that this project has taken at least seven or eight years, and that's very long, and I'd like to have some kind of an explanation on the history. How did it get this far behind? What went wrong and so forth? A financial accounting, what did we think it would cost? What is it going to cost? And then the last one, uh, is, relates to the redwood trees all along Green Island Road. I'd like to know how many of those trees are likely to be taken out and/or how many will be saved, so we have a sense. As you know, we've gotten into climate action and carbon sequestration is an important thing, and beautiful thirty-five-year-old redwoods are part of the solution. So if we're pulling them all out, I'd like to know why and what, what options we had. So basically, how did it take so long? What are the costs? How many trees are we losing? Uh, I'd, I'd appreciate a report on that at some point in the very near future. Thank you.
If I could add to that, uh, Councilmember Joseph, if we have to take the trees out or we replace it?
Yeah. Well, we could, we certainly could replace them, but it would, we can't replace thirty-five years of growth and.
No, I understand, it's just if it's, uh, becomes essential, then there's a location somewhere to plant trees. I think that would be helpful, just to comment on, but I appreciate your statement. Anything further? Do we have a resolution to address? Is there a motion? I don't know if there's a motion, but.
Are you, do you have more comment? Do we have more comment?
Yeah, I do have comment. I'm waiting for my turn now, so.
Uh, please go.
Yeah, um, so, uh, Councilmember Joseph brought up a number of things. Is, is there anything that can be addressed right now, so we don't have to wait for a report later? I think I've already heard before of the trees, and I thought we had a solution to that. The second thing is, on the time, um, at least from my understanding, I, I, you know, there was challenges with PG&E and AT&amp;T, and then they had a report of CFD, uh, you know, I, I don't know if, if it's, if it's a, if the implication or the insinuation there is that it took staff a long time. I'm sure there's probably things that we could have done faster, but I'm trying to understand where those questions are directed at, and I'd, I'd like to know that answer right now, because it, it just seems insinuating, honestly.
I could give a quick summary, uh, from what I know to date, that's all, Mr. Holly.
What, what I was, uh, and I appreciate the, the comments, what I was envisioning is the chronology, just of, of the project, the history of the project, and that the facts behind the project, um, the subjectivity about behind, how, what, how things took or what have you, wasn't planning on, um, diving into that content, because there's a, a lens of subjectivity that can be applied, and we can do that when we present the report, but, um, I don't have all the, the facts about when this project was first put in the CIP, when we first began collecting fees and applying for grants. It's, it's a very complicated project, and we're, um, you know, trying to celebrate the, the first construction phase, first real construction phase of it, uh, going to construction right now. So, uh, we, we can bring back the information on the chronology of all that, and, um, if, if there are other details, I, I don't have those details at, at the ready for this, but...
Yeah, well, then I'll just comment that I feel like, you know, I've been on this council for five years, and I think we approved it after the CFD, the second or third year, and knowing how project plans like this go in terms of having a vote and everything, it's, it's not as fast as I wanted it, but it seems reasonable. So I'm glad we're doing this, and I'm looking forward to this getting done. Hopefully, it goes smoothly from here, and I think we're well on our way. We found the money.
Yes.
Right? We've got the plans, we're getting it done. In terms of other comments, I don't really have any other comments, but if there is a motion to be made, I would invite Councilmember Joseph to do it, because there's some amendments in there that I could not memorize in my head that you would like to make.
Oh, uh, I am happy to make that motion, um, and like I said, I do think in accounting for a project of this magnitude needs to be documented. I, having talked to a lot of business owners out there, I can assure you, they are not as cavalier in the timeframe that it's taken to get us to this point, and, and I don't want to be, I don't want to distract the fact that I'm excited that we're moving forward, that I do have faith, uh, despite my comments to you a few months ago about, I've heard that line before, I do believe we are going to get this done in the next year or two, and I am excited, but I would be irresponsible if I also didn't acknowledge that something that's taken at least eight years to get done, the public has a right, and if not the public, the business owners have the right to, to an accounting, and that's what I'm asking for. So with that in mind, um, let me see if I can find the right spot. Here it is. I would make a motion that we approve Resolution twenty twenty-two, next in order, a resolution of the City Council of the City of American Canyon, number one, awarding a construction contract to Saint Francis Electric LLC in the amount of one million seven hundred and sixty-six thousand eight hundred and sixty-seven dollars. Two, awarding a construction contract to RC Electric, Inc. in the amount of twenty-nine thousand one hundred and seventy-five dollars and forty-six cents. And three, authorizing the Public Works Director to approve contract change orders in an aggregate amount not to exceed two million five hundred and seventy thousand dollars, uh, in conjunction with the Green Island Road Rule twenty A slash B Utility Undergrounding Project, TR sixteen dash zero seven zero three.
Is, is that the correct reading on the two?
I believe we missed item number three, authorizing city manager into an agreement with Conso or North America Incorporated.
Yeah, that's, that's what I thought.
Oh, okay, that wasn't on the resolution that I had, so maybe there's a new and improved one. Right, that's.
It's on the motion text in the agenda?
Okay, then I'll, um, add or rewrite or reread, uh, number three is authorizing the city manager to enter an agreement with Conso or North America, Inc. for construction management services in an amount not to exceed two hundred and fifty thousand, and then the Public Works contract change order. Now, it's that for making it complicated.
Does that meet the requirement? Mr. Holly, Mr. Ross?
Yes, it does, ma'am. Yes, it does, Mayor. Thank you.
I'll second.
Okay, motion second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Washington?
Yes.
Councilmember Oro?
Yes.
Councilmember Joseph?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Albedamos?
Yes.
Mayor Garcia?
Yes, thank you, Council. Moving on our agenda, we have item 15, Playground Replacement Project, PR-21-0100.
Thank you, Mayor. As Director Akidia comes up, just wanted to give a little backdrop. We had a presentation at your last meeting and council provided some direction and this item is the first part of that related to the equipment. There's still some other loose ends that we're tying up related to the canopies and the playground surface at Via Bellagio, but we wanted to make sure that we can get the long lead items like the playground equipment approved and ordered. Otherwise, that could take six, eight months and we won't actually hit summer for we're able to get this equipment out there. So, that's how the staff report dovetails with our last meeting, but I'll let Ally kind of take it from there.
Thank you, Jason. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'm here this evening to kind of recap how where we are today. Back in June, June 21st, 2022, the council approved the Playground Replacement Project in the amount of $327,912. That included the replacement for playgrounds at Via Bellagio Park, Lynwood Park, and North Hampton Park. After receiving feedback from the community as well as council members on the desired features that they would like to see at these parks, we were able to come up with some design features that are consistent with the original project budget for Lynwood Park and Via Bellagio Park. But we reimagined North Hampton Park, which is going to contain a more, which is going to contain universal and all access play experience that are going to meet the accessibility needs of our community. Part of this project would include, in accordance with the City of American Canyon Municipal's Code Title III, Chapter 3.12.27D, there is an exemption to competitive bidding requirements for this project. The council may authorize the execution of this contract where Sourcewell Cooperative Contracts falls under. And that allows us to be able to work directly with them, to be able to work with this project and be able to provide the construction and the equipment purchase for this project. Also, in accordance with the American Canyon Municipal Code Title III, Chapter 3.12, staff is recommending that council award Equipment Purchase Agreement with Miracle Play Systems, which is also part of Sourcewell. So, that's where they fall under Sourcewell. This project that's presented to you this evening would have a project increased budget of $351,980, which would be covered by park impact fees. That which the total project budget would be $679,892, which would leave a remaining balance in our park impact fee funds for the remainder of this fiscal year of $414,777. So, this evening, staff is recommending that you adopt a resolution that would authorize a budget transfer from the park impact fee fund to the capital project fund in the amount of $351,980. Number two, approve a ward of construction and equipment purchase agreement with Miracle Play Systems, Inc. for CIP project, PR-21-011, the Playground Replacement Project for Lynwood Park, Via Bellagio Park, and North Hampton Park in the amount not to exceed $679,892. Number three, authorizing the Public Works Director to approve and execute contract change orders in the aggregate amount not to exceed the project budget in conjunction with the Playground Replacement Project. And number four, approve California Environmental Quality Act SEQA exemption pursuant to SEQA Guidelines, Section 15, 302, for the replacement and reconstruction of the existing facilities. Thank you.
Thank you. We really appreciated the presentation last time on what was being projected for the park improvements and could see it's coming to fruition at this level this evening. Questions, comments from council members? Saying none, hearing none?
I have one.
Oh, I'm sorry. I see your light up.
I read the staff report over the weekend and just reminded, I didn't see it. What's the deal with the bathroom at Via Bellagio, not Via Bellagio, but North Hampton? And how are we tackling that?
Yes, it's only along the same lines as the canopy. We've gotten some either bids or at least looking at some potential options. So, what we're planning to do, just like the canopy, is to bring back some options on a potential bathroom and sometime in the next couple of months, bring that back for council consideration as well. Looking at some options.
So, playground improvements may go in, canopy and bathrooms may come in later?
We're hoping the timeframes can line up so that they all go in at once. They would be different contractors. And the lead time with this playground equipment is what is extraordinarily long right now. So, I'm not joking when I'm saying we could issue the PO next week and it would be April or May before the playground equipment would show up. It's just, it's that long. So, those other items are not as long as fabrication of the, even the bathrooms aren't that long of a lead time. So, we think we have a little bit of time to figure that out and we expect to bring something back to council. Hopefully, we can kind of all do it at the same time, but we'll see.
And those are going to be separate line item budgets from this one?
Correct.
And the council will have to make a decision whether or not we put a canopy there or a bathroom?
How big of a canopy, yes or no on the bathroom? The playground surface at Via Bellagio will probably be the next thing. We're hoping to bring this all as a package of options. If we don't have it all figured out, the playground of Via Bellagio, the playground surface will be the more immediate next thing because that will definitely need to go in when the playground equipment is going in. But we're hoping to bring a package of all three to you that says, here are the other things that we talked about. Pick and choose how you want and we can fill those.
Right. So, I mean, at least from the last council meeting, and I have this feeling too, is this sense of urgency to kind of get them done in and around the same time. It's not a two-year capital project that you're going to get a bathroom with a nice park.
No, we're thinking about summer '23 is the plan for all of this. But again, we needed to, the super long lead item of the playground equipment is what we needed to get tackled first.
Thank you.
Councilmember Joseph?
Yes, and I am excited about all this, but in deference to the few residents that I've talked to, we also need to talk about a possible bathroom at Silver Oak Park as well. I don't want it to get lost in the shuffle because we're focused on three other parks, but I got the most complaints about a lack of a bathroom at Silver Oak. So, hopefully when we get a cost estimate for North Hampton, it will be something that we can more or less apply for other sites. So, just want to make sure Silver Oak isn't forgotten. That's all.
Other comment? Councilmember Oro?
I just want to follow up on that. After the last playground conversation we had, I got excited and I went around looking for bathrooms and I found one at a really good cost and I sent the city manager some ones. If you guys want to look it up, it's called the Portland Lou. And they use it in Portland and I think he was pretty excited about that. But, you know, to your point, Councilmember Joseph, you know, as we think about parks and record in the future, bathrooms everywhere would probably be a good idea, not just Silver Oak. Godwell's a prime candidate for one as well. If we could have a few of those.
I agree. I know there's a maintenance headache and security issues, but, you know, I think bathrooms are a good thing.
Well, definitely where we have shelters and picnic space and people are hanging out for hours, right?
Well, we got areas that are getting huge volume of use.
The information that Councilmember Oro was able to share was really, really kind of fascinating. They've been Portland-proofed, I'd say. These bathrooms have been designed to withstand the rigors of downtown Portland, which far more obligations on their maintenance staff than we have here. So, definitely intriguing and we're getting some pricing from those folks and we'll see what we can do with those.
Send us some pictures. We've got to see what it is. Councilmember Oro, Washington?
Real quick, for tonight, the decision that we need to make for tonight is for the equipment though, correct?
Correct.
Get that going because like you said, that's what's going to take the longest.
Correct.
Okay.
Is that working okay? All right. Yes, good. It's good to be moving forward on this one. I think the, to the point on the bathrooms, clearly we all know those areas that get high level usage and certainly North Hampton is used an awful lot for basketball. Very good. Public comment on this matter?
I have Hugh Marquez on line. Go ahead, Hugh.
Hi, City Council. Ally, I just want to thank Ally for her hard work and trying to get this going. It's great to have the forethought of finding that equipment as soon as you can. I just wanted to thank her because you've done very well and I think the American Canyon is better off for what you've done. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comment?
I have no other hands raised.
Thank you. Okay, well, to the council and for further discussion, desired action.
Mr. Mayor, if there's no other comment, I would love to make this motion.
Well, please go ahead.
I'm so excited about this. Like I've said a million times before, I'd like to move Resolution Number 2020 Next in Order, a resolution of the City Council of the City of American Canyon, one, authorizing a budget transfer from the Park Impact Fee Fund to the Capital Project Fund in the amount of $351,980. Two, approving a ward of construction and equipment purchase agreement with Miracle Play Systems, Inc. for CIP project number PR-21-0100, Playground Replacement Project for Lynwood Park, Via Bellagio Park, and North Hampton Park for an amount not to exceed $679,892. And three, authorizing the Public Works Director to approve and execute contract change orders in an aggregate amount not to exceed the project budget in conjunction with the Playground Replacement Project, PR-21-0100.
And I'll second. Motion second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Washington?
Yes.
Councilmember Oro?
Yes.
Councilmember Joseph?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Albedamos?
Yes.
Mayor Garcia?
Yes, thank you, Council. Certainly a coram to this. Okay, we'll move on now to Management and Staff Oral Reports.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. We have, I believe, three updates this evening. Erica, Ally, and Brent have updates for you.
Good evening again. There's been quite a few inquiries about the various, the citywide paving project that took place a month ago or in October. We're still waiting on the striper to come back to complete the permanent striping. I got word today that they will be here Thursday to start the school area because we have the school safety concerns if the hallway stops. In the meantime, the contractor, the prime contractor, VSS, will be out tomorrow morning to install floppies across the little stick downs, across the stop bars to make them pop out a little bit more than the tracking that has gone out for the prepping for the final striping. In addition, we should have pipe coming in this week for the recycle pipeline expansion. It's on schedule and they have a, they're using, they fenced in a used empty city parcel on Spike Rush and it's enclosed, the pipe will be stockpiled there behind the fence there. And Wetlands Edge Court Extension or the cul-de-sac completion, that is starting. If you've seen a lot of equipment being delivered, I saw them deliver equipment during the, at the end of the Girls on the Run 5K on Saturday. But they have mobilized and they're working quite a bit out there if you haven't seen it already. So, if you have any questions for me on the construction.
I was curious about the Spike Rush parcel and thinking, what's all that stuff there? So, thank you. Now I know what it's about.
Any questions from council? Thank you for the report.
You're welcome.
Good evening. So, first I wanted to take this opportunity and thank all of our volunteers and our staff that assisted with the Ridge Trail project that occurred a couple weekends ago up at Newell. Especially want to thank Felix Hernandez's team, Daniel, Doug, and Juan. Without their help, I don't think this project would have been completed and I just really wanted to put that on record because they were a huge help. And so, thank you. I also would like to thank Cindy for all of her and all of the volunteers for all of their hard work and coordination for the Veterans Day event that we just had. It was an amazing event and we just wanted to take this opportunity and say thank you to her and to all the volunteers that helped and supported that. Also, I'm here to talk about everything else that's upcoming that we hope to see you at. So, on November 21st, in partnership with the American Canyon Fire District Family Resource Center and Toys for Tots, there will be a holiday gift program from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. The city offices will be closed from the November 24th to 25th in observance of Thanksgiving holiday. But don't worry, if you need services or assistance, you can visit our online portal with our virtual city hall. Everything's there. Services will continue while our actual building will be closed. And then on November 30th, we have, there is a Tours of Model Prefab ADUs from 1:00 PM to 5:00 PM. And then on December 3rd, we have our reindeer run. Well, ACCPF will be hosting their reindeer run. So, if you are interested in supporting them, which we hope that you will do, it's a really fun event, 5K or 10K. They're still taking registration for that. It starts at 9:00 AM. And then on also that same day, in partnership with the Chamber of Commerce, we have our Magic of the Season event and that's going to be at Shenandoah Park from 3:00 PM to 7:00 PM. And then also that day, the Double Tree Napa Valley will be holding their own Christmas tree lighting from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM. Thank you.
Ally, what's the ADU tours? Where is that?
I don't know exactly where it is, but you can visit our website and you can click on the community calendar and it will have all of our details of all of our wonderful events that are taking place in the City of American Canyon over the next couple of months.
Thank you so much.
You're very welcome.
Thank you for the report.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, and members of the public. I have two quick updates for you tonight. The first one is the housing element was sent to the State Department of Housing Community Development for their 90-day review. So, that's a pretty big milestone. Of course, we had a workshop with the Planning Commission in October, completed the public comment period, and then packaged everything up and it's now in HCD's capable hands. So, we look forward to getting the 15-page letter and responding to their comments when it does come in, when they're completed. The second item is another large milestone. The coming up on the Planning Commission on Thursday night is the Jivenoni Logistics Center project. That's a 208-acre industrial park on Green Island Road that will take full advantage of the beautiful new Green Island Road and Devlin Road. Assuming the Planning Commission completes its review on Thursday and makes a recommendation, we'll be bringing it to the City Council for your meeting on December 6. So, that's my update for you.
Thank you. That's exciting stuff. Anything further, Mr. Holly?
That is all, Mayor. Thank you.
Move on now to council committee reports. And after that, we'll take up future gen items. Councilmember Joseph, anything to add to your report?
No, no, thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Washington, anything to report?
Only thing I know that this Saturday, I know Jen was going to mention it, but is it the Citizens Academy graduation class this Saturday?
That's correct.
Yeah, so I'm excited about that.
I think that's a thinly veiled opportunity to show up and do a lot of volunteer work though, right? Is that?
We're going to be doing a little bit of spruce up at the former school, soon to be city property. Well, it is the city property, but soon to be.
And I mention that because I got a lot of good feedback from the people in the class saying that they enjoyed it and they learned a lot of stuff. So, I'm excited for them.
Well, and I'm excited to be out there and will do what I can to help out afterwards too. I'm not suggesting that I don't want to help out. I'm just saying, it seemed like an interesting, here's a graduation and now here's a shuffle. Get to work, which is good.
Nothing else there, Mr. Mayor?
Life is both celebration and work.
That's right.
Hey, the two go very well together, don't they? Hey, the two go very well together, don't they? Councilmember Ora, anything?
No, I don't, sir.
Okay. Vice Mayor Abadamas?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to give a shout out to Cindy Beederman and everybody who put Veterans Day together this year. Volunteer, it was super amazing to see the youth art involved this time around or added this time around and, um, having it basically hosted by volunteers speaks to the spirit of this community, so thank you for that. It was truly an amazing event.
Thank you. Well, I like to read, uh, I read verbal reports. Veterans Day, that is always a great celebration of American Canyon and many thanks to, uh, city staff and to Cindy Beederman who's really taken it to heart. It means a lot to all of us, particularly those of us who have, uh, veterans in our families and, uh, loved ones lost also. I think it's, uh, really is an example of what, uh, the heart of American Canyon community is all about. And frankly, I was very pleased to see that the, uh, Napa Register took it up and, uh, we do have some, uh, people here. We're on the front page. But no, it's, uh, it feels good. I do recall a time when, uh, I was new to, uh, I think City Council at that time, probably about 2002. Uh, somehow, the event got skipped. And, uh, Cindy was beside herself. And I think that's what motivated her to, uh, make sure that that happens every year. And I just like, would like to extend my deep appreciation and thanks to, uh, her commitment to that. Good job done. Uh, we also had a great event, uh, over the weekend. It was the Band Review. Uh, and Napa, American Canyon High School was the sponsor this year. So, Councilmember Joseph and I were there in the morning to hand out trophies. I think we had a number of, uh, bands, about 15, I think, uh, participating from, uh, throughout the Bay Area. Uh, actually, a band came in from Carson City, Nevada. Later that evening, I was there with, uh, um, Mayor Scott Sedgeley at, uh, the Napa Memorial Stadium. We had 25 bands performing. It's rather incredible when you see all the choreography that goes into putting one of those together. Uh, when you have huge bands like, uh, Cupertino, which is just massive, but the, uh, the effort they put into it is just remarkable. And I would encourage those, uh, I'm glad to hear that they had, uh, an opportunity to do the parade here, uh, near the high school. Thank you, staff, for assisting with that. Uh, also, uh, well, a great event with one of our great assets, the wetlands and the birds. So, with American Canyon Community and Parks Foundation, there was an opportunity with the Audubon Society to come down with binoculars and Councilmember Joseph and I had an opportunity to, uh, have it all explained to me. And, and made some new sightings out there. But it's, uh, my goodness, when they, when the tide goes out, uh, the cafeteria is open for all the birds. I mean, they're just busy. All they're all over the place. And, uh, able to, uh, identify species. Oh, I obviously wondered what that bird was. I'm sure you had the same thing. Now, they got somebody who can describe it for us and tell us something about their habitat, et cetera.
I think they mentioned there was over 70 species that they were able to observe.
Yeah.
Amazing.
So, as we move forward with our, uh, plans, uh, with the, uh, American Canyon Community and Park Foundation's Ecology Center, this is an asset that, uh, everybody remarks about it. This is a treasure. I mean, virtually nobody has, uh, a feature like this. It is accessible as, uh, we have it here in American Canyon. So, that's pride of our community in that. And that would conclude my report this time. Uh, I want to take an update on the Planning Commission recruitment update.
Yeah, we normally end with those, but, uh, we're a little bit out of order. Um, I, uh, Councilmember Washington and I head up the Subcommittee for the Planning Commission Interview Process. Um, and for the public that's not involved right now, as we have, uh, we are in the process of appointing two new planning commissioners because the natural terms of current, uh, members are, uh, three? We're up to three? Oh, wow, three. So, we're doing three. So, the natural term of those are up, uh, this time and so we have to redo those. Unlike years past, we've had a lot of interest in applications. Uh, and you normally will, we would get three, four, or five, and it was really easy. Take those in and do that. This time, we had 18 applicants coming in. I don't know what it is. I don't know if people are really wanting to do something different or if it's our communications team really promoting it really well and getting the word out. But there's a lot of interest here, uh, to be on the Planning Commission. Uh, we will follow this up soon with a Parks, uh, and Services Commission. Those are up to, those are two seats and those are up to, how many, Jason?
Eleven.
Eleven as well. So, thank you, American Canyon, for participating in that. Pierre and I's task was to go away and figure out how we would, uh, do this process because what we learned in the last process, um, was that we also had a number of applicants, but how could we improve it, make it a little richer experience, and also make better decisions on it? And so, this update is actually to the rest of the council members. Um, and what we're doing is bringing forward to you the recommendations this evening of how, uh, we feel like we should move forward. So, um, earlier in this process, just so the public knows, we actually reviewed, we got, we received all 18 applicants. We asked the council members to provide, based on the written applications, to provide their top six. From there, we chose the, from those, we chose and ranked them. The committee is recommending that we interview the top nine candidates based on rank, meaning each of us pick six of them. Um, of those nine, this represents applicants who've got two or more votes from council members. What we would, what we are suggesting is those who receive less than, than two votes will be notified by the city clerk that they are not moving forward in the process. So, we'll go from 18 to nine based on how councils reviewed the, uh, their, their written applications and what they know about the candidates. If council is okay with moving forward to the top nine, the committee is recommending that we move forward with a two-part process. The two parts, one is written and one is live interview. Um, you have before you on your table here and, and Vice Mayor Abadamas, you have suggested questions of both written questions on one side and the second page is suggested questions, potential suggested questions for council members. So, the written interview questions are actually pretty easy. What we found when we were brainstorming questions was that there were some simple questions to answer. Are you a registered voter? How long have you been here, right? So that you can review those and knock those out and we don't have to use them in the live interview process. So, written questions, we would ask the top nine to tune in the written questions. Um, and then we would come back to council chambers and conduct live interviews in person. Each, each candidate will get 10 questions and council members will be asked to, uh, will be allowed to ask two questions for a total of 10 questions for one candidate. Two for Pierre, two for me, two for Leon, two for, uh, everyone across the board. 10 questions total. Candidates will have, we're recommending that candidates get two, two minutes per question, so approximately 20-minute interviews across this, and this is in, in addition to the written questions that we have. And then, um, we provided, the committee provided, potential questions for council members here. The idea is you get to pick the two that you want to answer. Um, if you don't like any of these potential questions, come up with your own. We want to give council members the opportunity to ask their questions, but we, we are suggesting, and we had this discussion, was to ask similar questions to all the candidates so you can get the right answer across the board. With regards to the process of candidates in the room, last time we had everybody in here in this room, uh, and we asked the same questions. So, the first person had to answer the question and then the last person had 40 minutes to figure out, but you know what? I know my answer to that question. We legally, since it's a public meeting, we legally can't ask them to leave the room, but we will suggest and open up the conference room outside just to, to welcome them to sit outside, uh, to try to make it a more fair process and so that they know those questions. And that's what we're suggesting here. So, that's the overall, um, suggestion and you just, you know, cut it down to nine. We'll invite those in. We'll do the written questions and, and then also the interviews. Um, before I open it up to comments, questions, suggestions, there, we did learn a couple of lessons in this whole process. The initial application process needs to be improved. So, the initial application for everyone is not, is not tailored at all to the commission report. It's just, why do you want to be on this committee? Why do you want to do that? I think for the next one, for the next round, we will tailor this. What are your thoughts on joining the Planning Commission? How do you see development in this city? Make the initial application process, the written application process, more robust. Um, and then that way, well, you know, anybody who's applying will have to show a little bit more commitment than answering very simple questions. We would do the same on the Parks Commission as well. Ask them, what do you think about parks? Are you playing, are you participating in parks? What do you want to see parks? Whatever it is. Um, and we would customize it for each one. Uh, and I think that will help the process along and give us better answers. So, with that, uh, I'll open it up to Councilmember Washington to see if he wanted to add anything.
No, you actually summed it up very well. Uh, thank you. Thank you very much.
No, that's why I wrote my dissertation before council meeting.
I, I just have a clarifying question. The written questions, the, are we giving these to the nine applicants to say, fill this out and turn it in in advance?
Correct. We would give it a couple of days before in advance.
Okay, good.
Right, so we've given them as soon as we say this is it, and then we would give them to them right away, give them a deadline a few days before advance. I don't think it will take too long. I mean, I'll just, you know...
Yeah, no, and those are good questions.
You see, those are pretty easy questions. Are you a graduate of the Citizens Academy? So, when did you attend? Things like that.
Okay. No, I think that's a much better, yeah, I think when you have 18 applicants for three positions, you've got to do something to thin out the numbers. Um, and so, this is as good a process as any, so thank you for going through all the effort.
And how do we get to nine?
We got, we got to nine by, you, you, you participated in getting to the nine. So, it's sort of a rank, it's not rank choice, but it was, pick your top six candidates based on the initial applications. And everybody picked their top six and I think if we looked at it, and I know, I'm going to be careful not to name names, um, but there were several candidates that got no votes and there were several candidates that got one. And we vote. And we chose to take anyone who had two or more, which is how we got to nine members.
That's nine, okay.
Right. Which also is three times more than the number of seats that we need to fill, which gives us a healthy pool to choose from.
I like your voting process. Thank you. Hi? Maryam, questions? I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Abadamas?
No worries. Um, I'm just taking it all in. It's, um, it sounds like a good process. 18 is a lot to interview in one night, so I like that we're narrowing it down. Um, did I miss the number of how many we're going to ultimately interview or has that not been decided yet?
The number is nine. Planned for three hours.
Oh, so the, the nine that are going to do the written questionnaire are also going to be interviewed? They're not going to be eliminated based on responses to the written questionnaire?
Well, we're recommending that we interview nine. The council is free to, um, help shape this process. Um, if you want to narrow it that down based on the written interview responses, we could do that as well. But the committee is recommending nine.
So, I, I like the process. Um, I like that there is a written questionnaire followed by interviews, but I think that doing both for a volunteer position, if it's not being used to eliminate, is a bit tedious. So, I would, you know, be, be partial to using the written questionnaire to potentially eliminate more people from the interview pool. I don't know how the rest of the council feels about that.
Yeah, and so just, Vice Mayor Abadamas, I would just like to remind you that the written questions are actually pretty simple to answer. They're really yes or no or whatever answers in terms of that. Um, that, you know, you could eliminate from that, but the, the, the written question, the second written questionnaire was to eliminate the questions from council. So, I don't have, so I don't have to use that as one of my two questions.
I understand. Um, I actually, I saw the questions and I, I totally get that. Um, but I'm thinking we could change them. Like, I didn't think that the questions are set in stone, right?
They're not set in stone.
So, if the council is partial to using written questionnaire to further eliminate candidates, um, then maybe we can rework the questions. But if not, then, if the council's not in favor of that, then we can just move forward with the nine. I'm fine with it either way.
Well, if I can jump in, I, I think depending upon the, the written questions, depending upon how they're answered. I mean, if one of your answers is, I don't have time to participate on the Planning Commission, that might be a rationale for saying, okay, let's not interview that person. So, you know, I'm assuming most everybody will be able to say, I don't think these written questions will screen out anybody, but they might. You know, again, if, if they don't have the time or the commitment, you know, that would be important for us to know. So, it could screen one or two candidates out, but probably won't, is my take on it.
You know, to Councilmember Ora's, uh, point on it, these are pretty simple questions to answer, I think.
So, one way we, one way we can approach this is that we can get the written questions back and make that decision. But I'm also cognizant of time. We're running out of time. We want to appoint these sometime in December and have them sworn in at our last council meeting. Is that correct?
The, uh, the intent is to be able to, well, I, I think we would probably swear them in once the decision has been reached. We probably still need to talk through whether you're going to actually do a voting, um, at that point or how you want to actually do the, the voting for, for the nine, for example. You could swear them in right then and there because all of you will be here and there'll be a clerk here. We could bring them back at a, at a summer council meeting, too. The Planning Commission meets on December, what, Brent, what's the December meeting?
Uh, 21st of 17.
17, thank you. December 17th is the last Planning Commission meeting of the year. They aren't planning to meet in January until the 4th Thursday, with the date of which escapes me, um, at the moment. But you would certainly, at a very minimum, need to do it at the meeting in January, the week prior. But my recommendation would be December 20th, so...
December 20th. Yeah, and by the way, I forgot. Once we get to the interview process, we will use that sort of like ranking that we used in the past to get to the final three.
Do we have a tentative date for those interviews?
No, that's why we're here talking.
There is a fifth Tuesday in November. Um, three weeks from today is the fifth Tuesday in November. My math is bad at the moment, but whatever.
Tentatively going to be a Fire District meeting and then that turned into the 22nd, so...
November 29th is a fifth Tuesday. Um, that it would be available. The council doesn't meet again for three weeks. So, um, you could do it, uh, on November 29th, um, if Tuesdays at this time...
Check your calendars now?
I can do it.
Yeah, I can do it. I would suggest that we do it a little earlier in the day as well, maybe 4 o'clock versus wait until 6:30.
I agree with Pierre.
It's going to be three hours long.
Might need a break somewhere.
Yeah, so the date, the dates of 29th could work at 4 o'clock or, or 30 or whatever it is.
For how many council members does the 29th work? Works for me?
Works for me.
Works for me, too.
Do we have, uh, everybody?
Yeah.
Okay. Then it's going to be the 29th at 4:00 PM?
Yeah. So, that leaves open the question of how you want to do the questionnaire, if you want to weed people out. I, given the timeframe, so...
First, I just forgot if we're good with the, the nine.
Yeah, if we're good with the nine, but I, I think, uh, what's on the floor is a suggestion that, you know, can we weed them out even more? Weed them out, it's a bad word. Narrow it down even more, uh, to, uh, to, to where we get it down to a little bit less if needed based on the written application. I, I like that, but as I stated earlier, I, I like that as better as the lessons learned in the process that we build into the fu, into the next round, considering the timeframe, right? And so, I talked about a robust time, a robust application process for the initial one. I think that will do a lot more to, to getting us down to numbers that are more manageable.
That would make sense.
So, my recommendation is to go with the process that the committee has recommended right now, um, with the opportunity to improve the process in the future, uh, with more robust written questions.
Mm-hmm. I, I would agree. And, and like I said, it's entirely possible that somebody's answer might disqualify them more along the lines of, you know, if you're not going to be here, we shouldn't interview you. But I would assume that we're going to interview all nine unless somebody comes up with a reason.
The other thing may be their availability. They may not be able to make that day that we decide to do the interview on, so...
Yeah.
I mean, that's a possibility as well.
If somebody fails to submit their written questionnaire for any reason, are we still going to interview them or does that disqualify them?
I think that's up to council discretion.
I, I would be willing to say, you know, if you don't fill out the written interview and submit in a timely manner, that's, you may have changed your mind.
It's qualifying criteria, I think. I think the...
That's poor planning for a planner.
No, I, I think the issue, I mean, is what if a candidate can't show up for the interview on the 29th?
Yeah.
Due to his family obligation or something. Because in the past, we've had that and that's, sorry, uh, that's the day for the interview. Because in the past, we've had that, and that's, sorry, that's the date for the interview.
Yeah.
And it's eliminating factor.
Yeah, it, yeah, you never want to say, okay, you, you know, I hate to disqualify somebody for that, but on the other hand, you can't do a whole lot of rescheduling either. So I think it's kind of...
Well, in the past, we have eliminated people because of...
Right. So I think...
But also, in the past, we've given a few dates to council and a few dates to the applicants to make sure that we can get something worked out.
We never probably had nine candidates, right? Nine candidates, yeah.
Yeah.
I think the real problem is, when you have this many applicants, the only way you can reasonably manage it is by saying, these are the parameters, and...
The applicants are aware of the process that we're going through generally, meaning they turn in an application, they can expect to be interviewed by the council, and those responses to the interview will play a role in their being selected or not, so... And, you know, they've been told to expect something in the near future, so this shouldn't be a surprise, and...
Yeah, if we make a move today, they'll have 13 days to adjust their schedules.
Correct.
The good news is, we're not scheduling this the week of Thanksgiving, which, you know, probably would be a challenge for us to show up.
I don't think we would do that anyway.
It is after Thanksgiving, so, you know, I think it's a good date to pick, and that's that.
There's a bit of a lull in the day's occupation, meaning, you know, we're between council meetings and the big holidays. One is over, and yet one's yet to come. So there's kind of that moment where Thanksgiving comes early this year.
So how would this work? Since David and I were on the committee, would it take one of the three of you to make the motion?
No, we're just providing gam...
We don't even need a motion really on this. I mean, what we're hearing from the entire body is that the process the Subcommittee developed seems reasonable, and no major objections, kind of talk through it. And all of you are available at 4 o'clock on the 29th of November, which we will notify the applicants to plan for. And we will send them the list of questions as soon as we can pull them together and let them know, you got to fill it out. That's part of the process. So turn that back in, and we'll give them a deadline a couple of days ahead of time, and we'll circulate that information then ahead of time to the council prior to the 29th, so you'll be able to see those responses. And then we'll see everybody on the 29th.
Yeah, and I would just suggest that, you know, the city clerk, get these out tomorrow as soon as possible to the council. And then I would also suggest to the council members, you know, we provided you with suggested questions. If you don't like them, create your own. You will have two questions that you own yourself. They could be from our list, or it could be from any list, but it's all up to you.
Just ask the same question, relatively the same.
Ask them relatively the same question.
Deadline for submitting that question to the committee?
I don't know. I'm going to leave that up to the city...
I would just say, bring them with you on the 29th.
Yeah, bring them with you. Yeah, they're your questions.
Okay.
Yeah. And I think before we do that, you know, we may make sure we're not asking the same question. Yeah.
That's true.
Not to belabor this point completely, but we have, we've closed applications for PCS. We have 11 there, and we're going to open up for the OSAC Commission shortly. Wanted to know how the council felt about using a comparable process, for example, for the PCS screening, whether...
Oh, so, in my, the committee is recommending that we do this in the screening, but if there's an opportunity where applications haven't closed, we want, the committee's recommending that we make the initial application questions more robust and specific to that area. So we want deeper questions and answers in the initial application.
Makes sense.
Well, before OSAC opens, the committee wants to create questions?
We want to, yes. As a council, we will create questions that are specific to each of those committees.
Okay.
For the application process.
For the application, for the initial application process. It does not mean that we still won't interview them. It's just a way to, to make it a much more, make the evaluation earlier and richer.
So are we comfortable with using a comparable process for PCS, where you pick your top